Welcome to Roots and Branches of Lehigh, the podcast where we get to know the faces, stories, and lives that make up our community. I'm Ryan Harding, and I started this podcast as a way for us all to connect with the people we live alongside. Growing up in a small town, I learned that connections go beyond blood. They're built through shared experiences, friendships, and the moments we celebrate together. Each week, we'll sit down with someone new from Lehigh to share their unique story, their passions, and what they love most about living here. So whether you've been here for years or just arrived, join us as we deepen our roots and reach out to our branches one story at a time. Welcome Jean Marie Burrows to the Roots and Branches of Lehigh podcast. And glad to have you here. So
Thanks for having me, Ryan.
Yeah, and we know each other.
We do.
So I've known Jean Marie since, since before I met my wife. So, or about the same time I met my wife, I guess.
About that summer.
Yeah, so.
I gotta be there for the courtship and everything.
That's right. You got to be there. So
I got to throw the bridal shower.
That's true. That's true. I forgot about that. Okay. Well, there you go. See? Look at that. See?
Yep. We're good friends.
I was in a part of the bridal shower. That's why I don't remember that.
You weren't there.
I wasn't. But that's awesome. Okay, good. Good. And, and now we happen to be, you know, fairly close in the neighborhoods, you know, of Lehigh here. And, and so, so what brought you back to Lehigh? Because, because obviously, you're not from Lehigh. I, you know.
Yep.
Panaca, Nevada, I think.
I am from Panaca, Nevada. I'm from a small town in Nevada, about 1,000 people. And we went to BYU together.
Yep.
After I graduated, then I moved to California just for six months during my gap year before my master's degree. And I was living with my sister. She had just had her first baby. She asked me to come help. And I met my husband in California.
Okay.
I left, went down to UNLV and got my master's degree. And the distance, you know,
Yeah, yeah.
made the heart.
Yeah. It just, you just, it just need
Drew me back there. But after my husband, he finished school, and around that same time, we found out that I was pregnant with our oldest. And his dad was diagnosed with dementia. And his parents had retired to Orem a few years before.
Okay.
And so that is what brought us back to Utah ultimately.
Was that, okay.
We decided that if any of our kids were going to know grandpa, we better move closer. So we said five years in Utah. And now 18 years later.
Yeah, I was gonna, how'd that work out?
I don't think my husband's ever gonna want to leave.
Yeah, sure.
And I, I love it here, too.
Good, good.
Yeah.
And, and what does he do for work?
He's a software engineer.
Software engineer.
Up in Salt Lake for, he does defense contract work.
Okay, so
And Lehigh, we ultimately chose Lehigh because I, I was scared of Salt Lake County. And his parents were in Orem. So this was our like, okay, we're between your parents and work. And I get my Utah County safeness.
Yeah, perfect. Love it.
Yep.
And, and you mentioned master's degree. What, what did you study?
It was interesting because I was going to get a master's in social work. I was very close to going. And my dad called up because he, he was a director of special education in my county.
Okay.
In Nevada and said, hey, a new program just opened up at UNLV. It is centering on autism.
Yeah.
And I was, I'd had, I just had experiences like the years before that helped me experience autism. And I was just drawn to it. And so I dropped social work and I, I ran for that master's of special education.
Okay, okay. And now, now you've been in Lehigh now, how long have you been here for now?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years.
This summer.
Okay, okay. So, good amount of time.
Yep, yep.
And, and obviously, you know, your kids have been here and, and stuff like that, been in the school districts and stuff like that. And so, okay, so, so tell me, you know, tell me what you love about Lehigh, besides the fact that it's halfway in between, you know, Orem and Salt Lake.
That was the initial attraction. But I also loved, we looked at a few areas, but I love our area because we're by the lake and by lots of land.
Yeah.
There's farms there. And being from small towns, I was drawn to that.
Sure.
We actually moved four years ago and built a bigger house, just a mile away because we loved the area.
Sure.
So much. And it, it just feels more small townish there.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
Tight knit, yeah.
And a lot of families, I'm guessing, you know, similar age groups for kids and stuff like that. So lots of friends.
Definitely.
If it's similar to my neighborhood and stuff, yeah, which is, which is nice.
And the kids didn't want to change schools. They, they wanted to stay at the same schools when we moved and everything. But yes, we fell in love with it fast. And then, yeah, we can't be taken away from that area.
Okay. So, so tell me what, you know, what got you started in kind of the civic, you know, part of things? I mean, obviously, you've been, you've been involved in a lot of things, you know, before what you're running for now. What sparked that interest? Why did you, why did you want to do that?
I love to tell this part of my story. My oldest was going into kindergarten. And being from a family of educators, my grandparents were teachers, my parents were teachers, my older sisters are teachers, I got my degree. So I taught a little bit before I got married or before I had kids. And I was so excited for my son to start school. And it was at the same elementary kid that your kids went to.
Yeah.
And it was huge. It was the year before they split and, and built a new school. And I walked into his kindergarten classroom and there were kids everywhere. There were like 30 kids in his class. And his teacher just looked overwhelmed.
Sure.
And I even felt when I talked to the administration, they were barely holding on. And I, I took a couple of steps back and I thought, do I want to put my son into a school like this?
Sure.
Or should I just teach him myself?
Sure.
And at that point, I had to think about it. And it was like, take him out of public education, or dive in and help. And I chose at that point that I was going to help. And I haven't looked back. I, that next year, with the new school being built,
Yeah.
The first meeting that the principal was coming at, coming to, I'm like, hey, gonna be there. I'm gonna meet this principal. I, I'm gonna make sure that I don't feel this overwhelmed feeling anymore. And that really was my spark of getting involved is deciding that I was gonna invest in public education with my time, my efforts. I've, you know, over the years, I've even had principals be like, are you sure you don't want to go back into special education? Like, we have this spot opening. And I said, no, I, I love just volunteering. I love being a part of everything. I feel like I could make a bigger difference that way.
I love that part of it with, you know, because obviously, we all have a choice of, you know, homeschool our kids or do different things. But I think that's what makes a school district really good is that the fact that actually, hey, there's all these good people trying to, you know, you know, we all have the same goal, educate our kids, make them better, right? And, and it sounds like that's kind of what got you into it is, hey, I see a need here. I have some background here. I have some time. I want to make things better, right? You know, what, what things can I do to make things better?
Yeah, definitely.
And, and so what kind of things did you do? I mean, what, you know, what was your?
Kind of my story.
Yeah, well, would you, yeah, what'd you do?
So that first year, I, they needed someone to be over fundraising for PTA. No experience with fundraising, but they, they needed it. So I jumped in. That year, I also had my, my youngest child. I was, I found out shortly after volunteering for that, that I was pregnant.
Okay.
And so that was, I was like, oh, how's this gonna work out? But, you know, she was just raised in the school since she was happy with it. Like, you know, the weekend before I had her, I helped run the box top store. And a month later, she went to her first meeting and she just continued on that way. So I started there. And then when I felt like she was old enough, I joined my first school community council. And I loved both aspects of PTA and school community council because PTA, I felt like I was involved. I got to do activities and all those things. But with school community council, you get to really learn what runs a school.
Sure, okay.
You talk to teachers, find out, because one of their main goals is to use the trust land funds money that we get. And how you use that really helps define the school because you're investing that money into it, whether it is additional support in the, in the classrooms like aides, or if they really want this program to support their math program, you're going to give money that way. And so I love the balance of being able to help run activities that make it fun for kids. And then also, how to fund, they're really helpful for teachers.
Sure.
To support the teachers in teaching them. I also want to add with, with PTA, throughout the years, I've had lots of different positions, just wherever it was needed. So I've been president of, you know, at different schools. But I've loved the advocacy portion of it. I've gone up to the Capitol every year for the last 10 years. And I love that aspect of PTA that you can, that they, they go through every bill and say, okay, if this affects education, we're going to take a stance on this. And I really like that, that you had that opportunity to learn those things and to have a stance with PTA. So I, I love both. Through PTA, I was able to go up the chain of command. Like I said, I was, you know, the president eventually at the elementary school, and then I was president at the middle school. And then I was asked to be the, the council president, which is for the whole area, all the schools that lead to Lehigh High.
Okay.
So it's six elementary schools, Willow Creek, Lehigh Junior, and then the high school. And I just finished doing that for the last two years, which was a phenomenal experience, just being able to work with the presidents from each of those schools, going into each of those schools and having, building friendships that way.
Sure.
And seeing their communities. And then there, I had monthly meetings with their principals. Love, love these principals. They are doing amazing work. And then also, as part of that position, is that I'm a board member for, I was a board member for the region, PTA, which means the district PTA.
Okay.
So I got to work, go to meetings at the district office once a month and meet and work with them. And I was, I was so impressed with our, our superintendent. He really would come in and he would just tell us what they're working on right then. He would ask us for advice. And I loved that he, he wanted that. He wanted that advice from the community. And he saw us as a community partner, like, PTA, you're representing the parents. So I'm coming to you for advice.
Is this like a full-time position? Is this, you know, like, how many hours a week are you doing, you know, with that position, I guess?
A lot of it, it's similar to what I'm hearing about school board position.
Okay.
It's what you decide to put into it.
Okay.
It could just be go to my monthly meeting at the district office, my monthly meeting with my council.
Yeah.
And just plan a few things here or there. I chose to go to meetings at different schools, support different activities. Whenever anyone would call or text, then I was free to help them through any situation. So I would say, for that position alone, every week, I probably put, you know, at least 10 hours into it. I also, even though I did that, I stayed on a couple of boards, just at the local schools. I didn't want to be like, hey, I got this bigger position, so I'm out of here. Good luck. So for PTA, I would, I would set aside Tuesday was my PTA day.
Okay.
And then I would have other meetings other days, but I let everyone know, like, Tuesday are my PTA days.
Okay. Well, and so, so now you're running for the school board, right?
Yes.
So, so was this kind of a logical, you know, hey, you know, I'm, I'm here, now I'm gonna go here? Or tell me what inspired you to do that?
Um, it is, part of, part of it is that I was going to be finished with this position, this bigger position. And I thought, in January and February, I kind of was freaking out, like, what am I going to do with my life? I have put a lot of time and effort into this.
Yeah.
So do I advance in PTA? Do I go up to a higher area? I have that experience. I could do that. But it just didn't feel right. Do I start working? You know, it was just, what do I do? And during that time, people at first, right after the district, like, they announced it passed, we were going to split, I had lots of people say, so what does this mean? And so I would explain to people the next steps. I, you know, I, I was
Because were you involved in that process, too, of the split?
A little bit.
Okay.
I was a little bit, but not, PTA stays neutral.
Sure.
We don't tell people how to vote on things like that.
Okay.
So we did information meetings, we, and things like that. But you stay neutral. You know, if people would come and ask me personally, then I would talk to them about it.
Okay.
But I became an information board. People would ask me, I would tell them the next steps. Teachers especially, were very nervous about everything. So what does this mean? It also was that time where we're switching over to our legislative session in January, lots of different bills that affected teachers. And so even more people were coming and asking me, like, what does this mean? And at the end of every conversation, they would say, so are you running for school board?
That's awesome.
And for a really long time, I'd say, oh, no.
No.
No, that is not something that I've ever wanted to do. I really respect them. But at the same time, part of my answer of like, why do you think it's split? I would say to them, our school board that we had could not work together well enough to keep our district together. We had the east and the west kind of had different sides, and they weren't budging.
Sure.
And so, as I would explain things to them about that and how it'd be good, it's great for us to have the smaller area so we can concentrate on our own needs. Because I was trying to stay positive through all my answers and interactions with people.
Sure.
Then I kept thinking, like, just, you know, from very beginning, when, when Nelson, my oldest son, was having that bad experience. And I was like, okay, I can complain about him having a bad experience at the school.
Yeah.
Or I can jump in and do something. And so as I was talking to people more and more, I was thinking, hey, if I'm going to complain about something that broke down our current district, am I willing to jump in and try to fix it?
Sure.
And, and help with a solution instead of just complaining about a problem?
Yeah.
And so that was part of it. There were also, you know, other aspects of it where, where I was thinking, wait, what do I do? I need, I need to know what to do next.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I felt, I felt inspired that this was the next step.
Okay. Again, we, we need good people in this. And so I'm glad you're, you know, one of those that, that will do that. So, tell me what, you know, how much control do you have over different things? And I guess what, what things are you hoping to accomplish or change, or, or just, you know, keep going on with this, with this new job?
So school board, they, they are over everything. You know, the first step, though, is that the new school board will hire the new superintendent.
Okay.
Who is the ultimate boss.
Yeah.
So I guess there is large control in that way, right?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, you're the one that's hiring who's gonna make the decisions.
Yeah, we will hire the big boss.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, you know, we hire the superintendent, the business administration administrator, who will then be over our finances. And so, so there's the budget aspect, there's the policy aspects. And so it, it is pretty intimidating to think about. But at the same time, it sounds pretty amazing.
Yeah.
That you get to help with the destiny of a brand new school district.
Yeah.
Because that, that new superintendent really is going to make or break it.
Yeah.
So you have to find the right person. So just studying and thinking about and getting advice are, our most recent superintendent, who just retired, so he's not our current right now. In our last PTA meeting that I was talking about that we have with him at the district office, he, he gave us a list of, of things to look for in a superintendent. And I thought it was very interesting.
Yeah, what things did he say?
He was talking about, you know, the integrity.
Sure.
And to make sure that it's someone who can connect with the community. It's some, I appreciated that about Superintendent Farnsworth. Because it's so large, he wasn't able to connect with everyone. With a smaller district, our new superintendent has no reason at all to not be in the schools.
Sure.
Connecting.
Sure.
We need to, you know, in our area, I said that we have nine, just in our area.
Yeah.
And I know Skyridge has probably, has 10. We're the, we're the largest city in the new district. So that's 19 schools. I mean, I guess in American Fork and, and the other cities and, you know, won't have as many schools as us. So that means that it's a, it's a smaller number that he can connect
Yeah.
with the community. And I think that that is very important. Definitely, I, I think that the new superintendent should have a, a strong education background.
Yeah.
That they understand. It would be great if, you know, superintendent had been a teacher before and had worked their way up, just because our teachers need to feel like, like they understand them.
Sure.
Not, here's this big boss who came in that has never been a teacher.
Yeah.
I think our teachers would really appreciate someone who has been in their place.
Sure.
Knows what it's like to be in that, those classrooms with those students.
Makes sense. Yeah. Yeah.
So that is the biggest
Yeah.
decision write-off. That is why, right after we vote in November, a week later, normally you wait until January to get sworn in. But a week later, after everything is settled and finalized, the numbers are, then we'll get sworn in. So we can start the process of hiring a superintendent right then.
Right away, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. Because it will, you know, you have to, it will take a few months for that. And we can't do anything.
Yeah. And that's, that's super important to have that. Well, so going forward with the, will that superintendent then continue to work with you directly?
Yes, yes.
So I mean, you're, you're still, because you're the board. I mean, you're part of, you know, so
And the superintendent will be part of the board also.
Okay. So is it kind of, I mean, I guess just for, you know, I'm more of a business guy, more like, you know, a CEO and the board of directors, is that kind of, you know, similar to it? Like
Similar, we have that business administrator.
Okay.
And he, so that person, I say he, because our current one's a man.
Sure, sure. But it could be a woman, too. Sure.
Could be a woman. That would be great. The business administrator is over those things. And so the responsibilities are broken up amongst, you know, the superintendent, the business administrator, and then there's the board. So the main things after we hire them is to create a vision of where we want our district to go. And that will be another really important thing. And then we'll, we'll have our goals underneath that.
Okay.
And it's so important to have a good vision and goals, because when we have our budget, everything from the budget has to be, has to support one of those goals or visions, that vision.
Okay.
And so, so it's almost like writing our own, I don't know, set of rules, our, our
Constitution, I guess, or, you know, I don't know.
Yes, something like that.
Sure.
So that is exciting that we, and, and to do that, in my eyes, you know, you could ask me, what do I want? And I could go on and on about the things I've seen in schools while I've been there or volunteered. But I would love to get the community involved. Like my, my platform is to be driven by the community input and get them more involved.
Yeah.
I, just as I did with my PTA responsibilities, where, where I loved going to each school, I would love to get, go into the schools that I'm involved in, who I'd be over, and ask, have, you know, monthly meetings or quarterly meetings and say, these are the things that we're talking about right now. What would you like? And I, and I keep hoping, because people ask, I'm probably like, stealing some of your things.
You're good.
People are gonna ask about taxes. People are gonna ask about, you know, how are we investing into our students? I would love to have more community input on those things because if we get their input and then make those goals, if we need more money or we need more support, we can come to them and say, this is the goal we made with you. This is the goal you want. I think they'll be more invested and they're, they will be more willing to actually support those goals.
Makes a lot of sense. I mean, if they're, if they're, if that's what they wanted, and you're saying, okay, hey, to achieve A, X, Y, Z, we need so much funding. Okay, yeah, hey, we're on board, right? So that makes a lot of sense. A lot of people like, probably would want to know, what, you know, how much influence do you have over, you know, what happens actually in this district and stuff, right? I mean, you know, I assume the state controls a lot, the federal, you know, controls a lot. I mean, but yeah, tell me, tell me your influence there, I guess. What things can you control?
So, some things at the district level, the superintendent will just be over. Some things, the business administrator will be over. Will be on different committees, like the budget. Policy is a huge thing.
Okay.
That the school board does. And that, that can cover a variety of things. The experiences I've had personally with some of the departments there that are influenced, our curriculum, and student support services. I have a cool story of, of my interactions with them.
Yeah.
Right after the vote came in to split the district, Regen PTA decided to do a pop-up nacho bar at the district office. They decided to give them a little pick-me-up since their business just exploded, essentially.
Yeah.
And I went there and I started talking to these administrators. And I remember talking to one of them that's in the curriculum specifically. And I said, you know, how are you feeling? And he said, you know, I kind of feel like I got fired. But tomorrow, we're going to get to work. And we're going to not just make one great curriculum plan for this next year. We're going to make three really good curriculum plans. And we're going to get to work on all of them. And we are going to find the needs of those certain students in those certain areas. And we're going to make it the best we can. So I want to give a shout out to our current administrators. I think that they do a fabulous job. They are some really intelligent people who have spent years and years working on things. And I think that they have done a great job. So with our new district, do I want to keep everything exactly the same? No, there's always improvement.
Of course.
And especially since now we're going from this huger district down to a more central district.
Yeah.
We are the, the central district.
Yeah.
We can take the students that are just there. And we can decide, okay, what are the needs of these students right here?
Sure.
I do love that aspect, that we have a smaller group of students that we can concentrate on, that we can take test scores, we can take, you know, surveys about emotional wellness factors from, and we can concentrate on what are their needs, instead of this larger area that's been before. So I, I definitely would love to build on, onto what Alpine School District has done.
Yeah.
And just, you know, basically tune it up and make it better for our students here.
Yeah. Which I guess makes sense why you were saying, hey, it's so important for that, you know, that district president to be among the people, too, right? You know, in this area. Because again, this is where there'd be, you know, helping these people and stuff. So these children, love that, love that. Yeah, you got a lot of work ahead of you, assuming you get, you get, you know.
We're just gonna assume, right?
I like it.
And hope for the best.
That's right. That's right. You'd be awesome. I know you would. So, so, so let's talk about, you know, some questions here, I guess, and stuff like that. So, you know, you know, let's talk about class sizes and, and, you know, the different resources and stuff like that. So how would you address some of those challenges?
Yeah, I think one of the biggest concerns most parents the community has is class sizes.
Sure.
And it's definitely, definitely been, it was my first concern with the district, right?
Yeah.
I, we need to tackle it. We need to figure out a way. What I need is, what we need is community support.
Yeah.
On that. I think the community wants smaller class sizes, but they don't understand what that means.
True.
Smaller schools does not mean smaller class sizes. You know, my kid's elementary school is over 1,100 students, where we have another school here that has, you know, 500 students. They still have big class sizes there.
Okay.
That is determined by the state. And they say, the, this is how big class sizes can be. And that's fine. We're going to give you money for this size.
Sure.
So in order for us to decrease class sizes, we have to invest our own money.
Okay.
Our community money into it. And that is why I think it's so important to get the community involved.
Sure.
Because if that is one of their goals, if they think that that is how we can help our students and our teachers the most, then we need to, to be able to invest in them.
Okay.
And that will take money.
Sure, yeah. And it's one of the ways, you know, you mentioned aides and stuff like that. Is that sometimes how teachers handle some of those bigger classes, is sometimes getting aides in there and stuff like that, too, I guess?
Yes, but most, most aide money, I know this because I actually have worked the last few years at the elementary Yes, but most, most aide money, I know this because I actually have worked the last few years at the elementary school. As a part-time aide. So I know about aides a lot. Plus my time in school community council. I told you that, I always said that I wouldn't be a teacher. But, um, my principal said, but we need you and your skills so much, and I said, hey, I can give you Monday and Friday. And she said, I'll take your Monday and Friday. I would come in on Monday and Friday and work with, I was called a behavior aide. So I'd be, I'd work with some of the kids that struggled with behaviors. And, um, I love that they were willing to put money towards that. Um, definitely the teachers, those classrooms I went into were very thankful for that. But with regular money, those aides aren't paid for. The district, you know, this is why it's very important this time of year to make sure you register your kids, especially your kindergartners. So schools know how many kids are actually gonna be in each class. Um, right now, I just heard that we got the numbers to get another fourth grade teacher two weeks before school starts. So they're trying to get those numbers right, but once again, they're based on what, what the state has says, how big. Certain grades can be. Um, and then occasionally the district will supplement with extra money to have some aides. Come in to, if, if classes are large or not, but most of the time, schools are responsible. So their money from the district, coupled with the trust land funds. You come together and you say, okay, what's most important for our schools? With being on school community councils at the elementary, middle school and high school level, it, it has been interesting to see. What's most important for them. Um, at the beginning, when we first built Dry Creek. A lot of our money went to technology because the district wasn't supporting that yet. And so we had to buy all these Chromebooks. But in the most recent years, with our numbers being really large, most of the money goes to aides. I think they, I think they were about eighteen this past year, which is a lot. But some of the best women you'll ever meet. And we did have, we did have one man, he spoke Spanish and he was amazing, and we loved him because. He was like a twenty-something-year-old going to college and he was everyone's favorite. Shout out to Logan, he's amazing. Wish he was coming back this year.
Sure, sure.
Um, I'm not going back as an aide this year, just because I am, I am running for school board and that's what I said that I would. Commit to, but I do love that I have that experience, so I understand what it's like.
To, talk to me, you mentioned technology and stuff like that, so that's obviously another area, um, that's, you know, changing, right, a lot, you know. Chromebooks and stuff like that where, you know, we used to have large techbooks, textbooks back in the day and, you know. Tell me how that's continuing to change education.
Yeah, um, I know a big question right now that people keep asking is about AI.
Sure, yeah.
And I keep, keep laughing at myself because I am the last person to use AI, I think. But from all the meetings I've been to and what I've experienced, it's not a question about if they're gonna use it. But when, when they're gonna use it and how they're gonna use it. And so I know that they're, they are looking into it right now currently, like, teaching students how to correctly use it. And there's teachers that I've talked to and they use it for their lesson plans and it sounds great, like. It sounds like a great thing for them to save time on. I think as long as we still make sure to have. Our personal touch. A teacher can give the best lesson in the world because they were told exactly what they needed to say for that lesson. But without them connecting with the students and showing care and concern to the students. Through that lesson, like, that's, it's not gonna do anything. Because we are human and we don't just need information, we also need care and concern.
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense. Um, and I, you know, I, AI is a wonderful tool and I think people continue to use it. But you gotta make sure that it, it's making you better, not making you lazy, I guess, right? You know, so it's augmenting your, your already talents and your, the talents that you have and stuff like that, making it better, not making you lazy.
Another part of the technology, just this past session of the state legislature, they passed a bill. About technology, what, like cellphone policy, basically, essentially. That every district had, has to have a cellphone policy. And so I know just this month, our district passed it, they, you know, they already had one, and so they made some. Some changes to it. And passed it. Um, this past year, Lehigh Junior was trying to update theirs. And I got to be a part of that process, and that was very interesting. They wanted some parent input on it, and so a couple of us joined that committee and it was, it was great. I, I loved it, and I, and I hope that I have more experiences like this where we had administrators, teachers. And parents coming together to make decisions about things like this. You know, we had some teachers that were saying, hey, if the work's done, I let them pull out their phones and it's fine. And other teachers that said, but your students are texting my students and interrupting my students who are not supposed to be looking at phones. And the other teacher's like, whoa, I didn't even think about that. You know, and I share my experience about my daughter who was freaked out to go to, to start junior high. And every lunch period texted me and said, mom, I can't do this, I can't do this, and I would text her back, yes, you can, and give her a little pep talk. And I don't think she would have gotten through the first semester without that. And so then we made decisions based on, okay, in classrooms, if parents really need to get a hold of them. They really should reach out to the office who then can, you know, pass on information and. And so part of it was, okay, well, if a student needs to call back, then you, the teacher sends them to the office where they can use their phone during the class period. But at lunch, they can have their phone, cuz some of them needed and, and it. You know, just conversations back and forth like that, give and take, and I think ultimately, what we decided on. Was a great plan and it wasn't what I went into ready to fight for, you know? But being able to listen to all those different sides helped.
Well, you mentioned earlier how that's one of the things on your platform is trying to, you know, community involvement, right? And, and I love that because the longer I'm alive, the more I realize I don't know everything. Which, you know, obviously that's true, but like, but the point is that like councils, you know, are so much better, right? I mean, cuz no one person, for as much experience as you have, and you have a lot of experience, you don't know everything still, right? And you just, and you don't always see things from every point of view because you don't have every point of view, and so I love that part of it where. I mean, if you really are counseling with other, you know, smart people and you, and trying to get, you know, different points of view and stuff like that, you know. Um, I think that's perfect because that's where you're gonna have better decisions made than. Than if it was just your own idea alone, no matter how good it is, and it would be good, I'm sure, you know, I know you, it, it would be a very good idea. But it's better with others, right?
Definitely. And I think it's great that you, you get this variety of people. Different backgrounds, different experiences, because we are representing a variety of people.
Yes, yes.
Not everyone is going to think like me and my family, not everyone's gonna think like you and your family. We need that representation and we need to remember that our main goal is to help give. The best education to these students. And these students doesn't mean just my students.
Sure, of course, yeah. And yeah, cuz we all have different backgrounds, we all, yeah, no, I love that. Okay, so, so talk to me about. Like your role with teachers and administrators and principals and stuff like that. Do you, you know. You mentioned how the district president will be involved and stuff like that, is that something you get involved too? Do you meet with teachers and different things and?
There are administrative conferences where they all get together. And, you know, I won't be hiring or firing them. There's, you know, a line of command there, but yes, I definitely, definitely you'd work with them. Because you're over their area and you need to, to have that good communication, that good relationship with them. So, so that way you would, yes, because they, you know, teachers know what is needed in the classroom. Administrators know what the overall concerns of their schools are, so you need to be able to have that communication with them.
Are there any, you know, hot button issues, um, going on right now that, you know, people, oh, hey, Jane Marie, you're running, okay, hey, you know. Here's something I'm concerned about. Has anybody kind of approached you on different things that they're?
Um, most people talk about the class sizes. Because where we live, so the elementary school my kids go to is two-thirds Lehigh, one-third Saratoga Springs. And so there's lots of people talk to me about that. Hey, do we, uh, do we really just have to leave? The district and can't go to our schools even though we can walk to our school and see it. So I've done a lot of research on that and options for them. And I've, I've really appreciated that time to be able to research it because I've reached out to city council members. You had Heather in here recently. And I have gained a great respect for her because she is over education and I knew that she had done a lot of research. I, I messaged her quite a bit, asking her different questions like, hey, how would this work? Do you think people would be supportive of it? I've talked to other school board members that are currently. You know, have their seats right now and I, I've asked them questions and so it's given me an opportunity to reach out to them. They're the ones that know the most information, but I love that people already come to me and ask me questions. And they did before I was even going to run for school board. Um, just because I have been active in our area. But I do love researching it and reaching out and being able to collaborate with other people.
Now, now with the smaller school districts and stuff like that, does that mean, um, you know, essentially more money? You know, cuz a lot of, i- it seems, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but seems like a lot of the money that was before was kind of. Spent on, you know, new buildings, right? You know, especially out west, cuz there's a need for it, and I understand that, right? You know, but then, you know, I think of, you know, I go to a, you know, a choir concert at Lehigh Junior and it's like, you know, falling apart. Which I know they did recently do some things to it, but, but I mean, you know, I'm gonna use that as an example.
If anyone's listening. We appreciate the remodel.
We do appreciate it, and that's, but, but you know, before the remodel, I mean, that's when it was like, come on, you know, and especially cuz we had been in Willow Creek before and. You know, it's this nice new building, right, and stuff like that. So my question is, I guess, you know. Am I to assume that, you know, more money would be here, I guess, obviously just in our district and so, you know, we may not have a problem like. You know, the, the auditorium that's breaking down and stuff like that, I guess, or, or?
Yeah, so the money will follow the students, so we'll have, you know, the same amount of money and we'll decide how we, how we spend it. Out west, they will have to spend a lot of money on buildings. Here, if you wanna talk about Lehigh specifically, we, we need another elementary school. So we aren't finished with growth yet. Um, we're helping for the Cold Springs Elementary School, which would help alleviate a lot of the students from North Point. There's a lot of growth right there on the border of Lehigh and Saratoga Springs. And their numbers are really high, they're getting close to twelve hundred. Yeah, so we, in, I know the number is better for this side of Lehigh. Than up by Sky Ridge, just because of my positions that I've had. Um, so we have two elementary schools that are in the eleven hundreds. And then we have four more, one down to, you know, like about five hundred-ish and then like some. A couple at seven hundred, eight hundred, and then one at, I think about a thousand, River Rock's about a thousand. So we do need to iron out some of those issues. And I think that we already have the land for a new elementary school. I would love for that one to be built. And then we need to do bound, a boundary change here amongst, because as I told you, all those numbers do not. Even out. Just for some relief from those areas. Once we can stabilize, I think that that will help our area. And like you said, we have, we won't need as many buildings. I know that in North Lehigh, there's more growth that there, so they will need more buildings. But overall, our district is, is pretty well set.
Yeah, good.
Um, and then, yes, then we will have extra money that we can also help do improvements on schools. And I, I'm excited about that thought, that we won't have to build forever. And that we can concentrate on what we have, and then we can even have budgets for other things that we can think about. Not a lot of people know, but the Alpine School District actually bought land for a technology high school here in Lehigh.
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's, it's land off of twenty-one hundred north. And they were starting to look into that and, and making plans. It's, you know, nothing's happening anymore. Everything, but that sounds like an awesome idea, right? If that is what our community thinks would help our students and would be a great asset to it, why not?
Explain to me what that, uh, and, uh, from what you know, but what would a le, uh, you know, a technology high school look like, or what, what does that mean?
From what I've been told, because this is just something I've heard about in the last few months. Um, going to meetings and seeing property and be like, hey, what does that mean? Asking questions is that it would be a high school available for the whole district. To be able to go to for those who want to concentrate solely on technology. They would still have, obviously have to have their English classes and their, you know, all the core classes that you have to take. But they would be able to have labs that are specific for different types of technology and. And I, I think it sounds like an exciting option. Right now, we, you know, we work really well with M-Tech. And give lots of students that opportunity to work through them, but to be able to have our own school. It's just like around the district right now, we have our dual-language immersion programs where if you wanna learn French. Then you can go to an elementary school that does half-day French or. Our ALL program where if you want advanced classes, then you can go to another school, so it'd be a specialty school. For those who are, who want to focus in.
On technology and different things. Okay, awesome. Um, so how many, how many, um, uh, of your position is it gonna be, you know, of the board? With our new central district?
There'll be seven board members.
Seven board members, okay.
And it's pretty amazing to think about that, right now Alpine School District has seven school board members. And that even, I think, increased one, I, I think it was six, maybe it was five. I know that the state. Just a few years ago changed it so there could be more. And, but I just can't imagine right now, it used to be, I remember some of our current school board members saying that they had. Twenty schools that they were over. Pretty crazy amount. Right now. You know, there's seven school board members and they still have high numbers. And so to think about seven just for our area, that's, our neighborhoods get representation, right?
Well, I was just gonna say that, I mean, cuz you go to the same school as I go to, you know, my kids go to, right? So I guess that's, that's probably what excites me the most is, is, yeah, you, you, I mean. The same issues that I probably have, you have too, cuz you're like, well, I'm, I'm seeing it too, Ryan, you know.
You know, while people were asking me if I was gonna run for school board, I kept saying, well, let's wait and see where the boundaries are for seats. And when I saw that it was Meadow and Dry Creek, I was like, that's my area. That is my area. It does include Greenwood and American Fork is also included in that because Lehigh. Had the population, it's based on population, had the population for three and a half seats, American Fork had the population for one and a half seat. Highland has one and then, um, Alpine and Cedar Hills share a seat. And, you know, it was, I was like, where are they gonna do the half seat? I'm actually really excited about that half seat. I, to me, I'm like, I do not know Greenwood that well, I know some people in Greenwood. But to me, that's like a whole nother school I get to make friends with. That's, you know, that's six hundred automatic new friends for me.
Yeah, well, again, you, it, and you will be able to, right, and you're, you're not over twenty different schools. Right? I mean, so that's a lot easier to get to know, one extra school than what you already knew.
So I am just like, that is why I'm like, there's no reason why I wouldn't be in every school every week. Checking in, like a teacher has a concern, let, hey, let me pop over on Wednesday and let, let me see what I can see. Also included because it's, our area is the smallest, um, seat five I know is. The rest of the Lehigh High School area. So they have a lot more schools, and so they partnered with ours, they put the two, um, specialty high schools. That are in American Fork. They're pretty small, they only have a couple of hundred students each, but even. But even, even that opportunity actually seems pretty exciting for me.
Yeah.
With my background.
Yeah.
And my work with behaviors and, I don't know, even just the community.
Yeah.
It, I'm like, I'm excited to see what they're all about and to be able to help there.
Yeah, good, good. Will the name still be Central District or are we gonna change that too?
So they already did a place, chose a placeholder name.
Okay.
Aspen Peaks.
Aspen Peaks, okay.
They asked um, the public for input. I can't remember the exact number, I think it was around a hundred different names. And then they had a committee that had, you know, city representation and current board members and there were a few people on it and they narrowed it down to this one Aspen Peaks.
Okay.
I, I know some people love it and some people hate it.
I hadn't even heard that name, actually.
Yeah, yeah, it's Aspen Peaks.
Okay.
And, but the new school board will either vote to keep it or to change it.
Okay.
I've heard the complaint that it sounds like a dental office.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
And I'm not even sure, where is Asp, is Aspen Peaks a?
They said that lots of people wanted a name, when they submitted names, lots of them had mountains or peaks in it.
Okay.
Because we're by the mountains.
Sure, sure.
So that completely makes sense. Aspen Trees are up American Fork Canyon.
Okay, so that's.
Is what I heard.
Sure.
I do love that it's a A name. It, you know, i- it's a little easier with Alpine and then Aspen.
Yeah.
So I do love that, that part of it. I think it's good.
Yeah.
But I'm fine if we change it also.
Sure, sure, yeah.
They had asked for input before. A lot of people said, hey, I didn't know about this.
Yeah.
I wasn't a part of it.
Yeah, I wasn't a part of that group.
So I'm fine asking again.
Sure, sure. What, uh, what, do you know what the other districts got named?
Yes. Um, the placeholder name for South is Tempanogas.
Okay.
And the West Side is Lake Mountain.
Lake Mountain, okay. Okay, so they all did kinda go with some kind of mountainous thing, sure, yeah, okay, okay.
Which, yeah, West makes sense, you know, they have the lake and the mountain and, and then Tempanogas down there. And I know people who complain about any of them.
Well, there, there's always people complaining and, and frankly, you know, um, um, you know, that's the first time I've heard of it. So my initial reaction is, I just hadn't heard of Aspen Peaks, I don't know where that, that is or kinda thing, but you know?
Yeah.
I like, you know, um, I like the mountain theme, I guess, for all the other ones and stuff, so, but, okay, interesting.
Yeah, I know Tempanogas, people are complaining, people don't know how to spell it, which is true.
Sure.
So they're like, maybe we should just do temp.
Yeah, sure.
That is easier.
Although, hey, it's education, right? I guess we gotta teach kids how to spell things.
That is true, but that word, I don't know who.
Sure.
Who came up with that spelling.
Good. Um, all right, so looking ahead, you know, five, ten years down the road, and, and how long is this position actually? How long do you get to serve?
So normally if you get, this position is a four-year term.
Okay.
But because all of us are getting voted in at the exact same time, they don't want to have to do that every four years.
Okay.
And so they, the county did it, they said they were gonna do random draw, I don't know if it was out of a hat or a generator or whatever.
To stagger that.
Yes, so there's three, I think it's three positions are for three years and four are for five years.
Okay.
My, mine is a three-year.
Okay, okay, so you already know it's a three-year, okay?
Three-year.
Okay, okay.
Actually, I think most of Lehigh, except for seat one, is three years.
Is three years, okay, okay.
Lots of signs every three year.
But you can, but um, you can run again, right?
Yes.
I mean, how, is there a maximum term?
Have a.
Okay, so you could be indefinite in there and stuff.
I could, yeah, until I die.
Sure. Yeah.
Won't happen, but.
Yeah, I'm with you. Um, okay, so then talk to me about, you know, um, five, ten years down the road. What, um, you know, what do you foresee as far as, you know, the school district and, and different things that you'd like to see, I guess, in the next five to ten years?
Yeah, that's an interesting question, um, cause lots of times we're, we're thinking about right now, you know, what's happening right now. But we, we talked a little bit about how the growth, like we have lots of growth, but it's slowing down, it's not gonna last forever.
Yeah.
So I would love for us to be able to explore more options for our students. When I've talked to teachers, they always are asking about programs, like, do support programs?
Yeah.
Do you, will you be willing to even give us more than what we have right now? And I always say, of course I would love to, but we will, I can't say yes to everything.
Sure.
So we would have to look at the budget and that's what's important with our goals that we make is like, make sure that we have everything we want in our goal so we can support it with our budget.
Sure.
So I would love as the growth slows down and we're able to stabilize building-wise, that we can explore more programs and look into things like the, the tech high school.
Sure.
It'd be fabulous if we could look into performing arts high school.
Sure.
Different options like that.
Sure.
Because as we said, talked about before, all of our students aren't the same, they have different interests, they have different talents that I would love to support them. That way.
Yeah, true, love that. You know, any specific initiatives, you know, which I guess, you know, kinda goes along with what you just talked about, but any, any specific initiatives that you know are happening or, or going to be implemented to help with education and, and, uh, you know, the arts and different things like that, I guess?
One thing that I've loved learning while I, while I've been running this campaign is that people have reached out to me.
Sure.
One of the first weeks I had, the band teacher actually at Lehigh.
Yeah.
Reached out to me and he said, are you gonna support us the same way? And I said, how about you explain to me how you're supported?
Sure, it's a great question.
You know, I, I support you personally and I know how to, how to support you as a community member.
Yeah.
But I haven't had this position yet, so can you please explain it to me?
Yeah.
And he talked about how there's certain funds and how it kinda rotates through who gets the money and each school gets, you know, their year where they get more money than other times, but that recently they've had, I think he said it was like dance was grouped in with them. And he said, it gets tighter that way, like the more people you group together, the less money you're gonna get, obviously.
Yeah, naturally, yeah.
And I thought, you know, that's very interesting, thanks, you know, for giving me this information.
Yeah.
Just this week, I had an email from a theater teacher in American Fork. And he asked similar questions, like, will you support us? And and I really appreciate them reaching out and asking us these things and he had a number of questions underneath, he had, I think, like eight or nine questions that, for the performing arts and I, like I said, as a community member, I'm one hundred percent supportive. You will see me at almost every play, concert, sporting event, I love all those things. And it will be interesting to see how we can support them with the amount of money we have. We can't say yes to everything and we can't improve everything at the same time. And that is why we, I, I think it's critical to have that, that community input. We need to know what's most important. I would love to support every student the best I can. The degree I can support them will have to depend on the money that, that we are allowed. But one, I'm gonna go back to my platform of getting the community involved and hoping that if they get involved in making these goals for us, then they are more willing to say, okay, I'll do what it takes to support them.
Yeah, yeah. Which you're showing me again why I'm, I'm glad that this school district's got split up. Because again, there's more, you know, local representation, right?
Definitely.
I mean, the fact that, uh, you know, again, you live and work and, you know, your kids go to the same schools that my kids go to, so, yeah, I mean, it's, you have a vested interest in making it better for them, which will indirectly benefit me.
Definitely. I feel like this is, you know, like, we start from the top and it goes down. As a, and that is maybe where I got that idea from. It's like, I know what's important to me, so I'm willing to fight for my area for that. But if, if community members know what they actually know, know what they are fighting for.
Yeah.
They're more willing to fight for it and want for what's best for those students.
Sure.
I, I think it's key for us to keep the community involved.
Yeah.
They, you know, I've been the parent that had no clue what was going on.
Yeah.
I showed up that first day of school and like, even though I'm sure neighbors told me, well, it's a really big school. You know, there's lots of students in classes until I went there and I observed it, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I didn't know how it felt to feel overwhelmed with my child.
Sure.
In that setting. And so I just, I just keep hoping that the more people we can get involved, the more people invested, that they're willing to do whatever it takes to help our students succeed.
And, and, you know, what advice would you give to, to other parents, I guess, you know, if they're like, oh, okay, hey, I wanna be involved. What, you know, what options are there for people? I mean, you've, you've been doing a lot of things.
Yeah.
Tell me the options.
So that first year, I, I was excited to work in the classroom and the teacher said, I have so many students that you get to come into the classroom once, oh, once a month. And that wasn't enough for me. Some pa- parents that probably was like, oh, great, I only have to come once a month, that's amazing and that's great, you know? So I started in the book room. I would help change out once a week, things like that. So there's always little jobs like that of, of, you can, you know, one hour a week or a half hour a week. Teachers usually have jobs. I've had teachers that say, hey, you know, I have everything under control, but I really would like help with grading homework. And so I've taken packets home once a week and I've graded homework. So you think me taking home a packet every week, actually, I think it was like every other week, there was another parent that took the, isn't that big of a deal. But I feel like any help that teachers can get, any help that a parent's willing to invest in their child's education is worth it.
Yeah.
And my kids saw that, oh, you're grading homework for this teacher? Your, your students see it. And so even if you don't hear of something as small as grading papers, go ask your teachers.
Yeah.
Hey, is there any way I can grade your spelling tests every week? And I bet you that there will not be a teacher that says, no, no thanks, I like to do my own spelling tests, you know?
Sure.
I bet that they would be willing to, to do that.
Yeah.
So there's things as small as doing that up to, you know, hosting grad night, which is a huge undertaking.
Yeah.
All, every school at every level needs help. And I, you know, you can start by, the best way to start is by actually voting in this election. Because right now you have the chance to, to influence years to come.
True, yeah.
Who you put in will represent you. And so I love it when I get questions, when I get an email asking me things because that is another community member who actually cares about our community.
Yeah. You know, I, I, I love Utah for the reason, you know, we, we have a lot of children, you know, in general in Utah, right? And our class sizes are bigger, but I think, uh, you know, remarkably, we have highly educated children still. I mean, that, that score very well and different things like that. And I think you just probably nailed maybe one of the main reasons for that is, is probably parent involvement with, you know, that makes it easier on a teacher to be able to have that spelling test graded by somebody else or, or to have other things done, you know, because there's parents involved. I think that's, I think you probably just outlined maybe one of the reasons why Utah still does well despite some of the, the disadvantages we may have financially, right?
Well, you know, parents are the number one teacher for their kids.
Yeah.
They will teach them the most. And if we can think about it that way, you know, like, me as a parent, I, I appreciate help as a parent.
Yeah.
So as long as we all are invested in this, I think that we're gonna continue to have great success.
Yeah, good. Jean Marie, is there anything we didn't cover that you wanted to cover, anything that, uh?
You know, there's always a million things running through my mind, but I think that I have been able to touch on a lot of things that I'm passionate about. Thank you.
Yeah, no, perfect. Um, this has been great. I, I think, uh, we're at a pivotal time, you know, as far as, you know, the school districts here and stuff like that and, and with the reorganization that's taking place and I'm excited, you know, for, for a lot of the changes. And, and again, to your point, the, the previous, um, group was doing really good job, right? I mean, I think what I would just say is maybe just the more local, you know, you, you have, if we go back to councils and why that's important, hey, now you have more councils happening on a local level and I think that's only a positive thing.
Definitely.
That's only gonna be a good thing for us, so, uh, I'm excited for that, so.
Yep, we get to hone in on those needs of our area.
Yeah.
Polish them out, you know, make them better.
Yeah, no. Well, I think you'd, you, uh, you'll do great in, in, uh, uh, in that position, assuming you get elected, so we'll, we'll, you know, wishing you all the luck.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, thank you. Thanks for coming in. Thank you for joining us on Roots and Branches of Lehigh. I hope today's story helped you feel a little more connected to the people who make up our community. Remember, every person here has a unique story and together, we're what makes Lehigh feel like home. If you know someone who would be a great fit for this podcast, please fill out the form in the show notes so we can reach out and schedule an interview. We'd love to hear from you. A big thank you to our sponsors, the Work Harding Home Mortgage Team and Play Harding Nightly Vacation Rentals for supporting this show and helping us bring our community closer together. Until next time, keep growing those roots and reaching out to your branches. Take care.